As we get started, there are a few things we'll need to do. This is a Wyoming Business Council work session. No action will be taken today. However, we will do roll call. And so I will ask Ms. Sutcliffe to please call the roll.
Good afternoon. Mr. Arnz, Ms. Adkinson, Mr. Brown. Ms. Harvey is excused. Ms. Johnson, Mr. Kenyon, Mr. Lance, Mr. Law. Mr. Pivik, we do see that you've joined online. Thank you. We'll mark you as present. Dr. Schaefer, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Tomasi. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutcliffe, and thank you, Board, for being here. I also want to thank the members of SLIB who were able to attend today. We have Secretary Chuck Gray, Auditor Kristi Resinas, and Superintendent of Public Construction Megan Degenfelder, who will be joining us today to talk a little bit about the decisions that we make in economic development. And I think it's important to kind of take a quick step back and understand the background of how the Business Council Board and the SLIB work together to come up with decisions that will help our communities be more self-reliant. My name is Josh Dorell. I'm the CEO of the Wyoming Business Council. And one of the things that's really important to us is to make sure that we can create a Wyoming that our future generations can find opportunities in, and also one that we can be proud that we left for them. And one of the things that we've found is that community resilience is a real big key to that. Because at a local level, we want our communities to be strong enough to do economic development on their own, with the state's help when it's necessary, but not solely dependent upon the state. And that's something that we've been working on for the last number of years, and it's something that I think we're making some progress on. And I think it's important to note the structure of the Wyoming Business Council and its relationship to SLIB. And so I'll take just a minute and walk everyone through that. So the Wyoming Business Council has a Board of Directors of 13 individuals from around the state. And those 13 individuals are responsible for making recommendations to SLIB that ultimately the SLIB decides the fate of a project, whether it gets funded or not. Now, our team of people that work across the state work with a number of communities all the time to develop projects that might make a difference in their community. Those typically are what we call through the Business Ready Communities Program, which is a grant and loan program that, again, helps fund projects that ultimately build self-reliance in a community. And that work gets done through our team, and then through committee work with our Board, we make a recommendation to the Board. Now, our Board, who is meeting tomorrow, will see projects, and then the Board will vote to either recommend a project for funding, or recommend to not fund a project. And that recommendation goes before the SLIB. And SLIB is made up of the three individuals you see here, but also the Governor and the Treasurer. And so then that information is presented to SLIB, and SLIB ultimately makes a decision to fund or not to fund a project. And I think it's important to understand that relationship because we all bring a different perspective to that. Now, our team brings a perspective that, hey, we want to help this community, we want to look at ways to unlock potential and things like that. And then our Board brings yet another perspective. And that perspective is helpful in the decision-making process. And then ultimately, SLIB brings yet another perspective, and together, we feel like that that makes a really good decision for the state. And so I think it's that relationship that I wanted to highlight, and that's one of the reasons that we're here today, is to talk a little bit about the decisions that we make, the way we see economic development in the state, and maybe the future of how the state should look. And again, having all of us in the room, I think it's really important. So just a quick agenda of what we'll do. We'll start out by talking with each of the SLIB members to learn a little bit about their backgrounds and learn a little bit about their perspectives. And then we will, we're going to have an activity. So for those who might be joining virtually, it might not be that interesting to hang around for that activity because it's going to be a little bit of a, well, it's going to be Scrabble. And so that'll be interesting to see how, what kind of competitive juices we can start up here, as well as what we can learn from that from an economic development standpoint. And then we're going to talk a little bit more about economic development in the state, and then have plenty of time for Q and A. Because I do think it's important to create a dialogue around this, not have it be a stance or anything, but really more of a dialogue. And so hopefully, with those elements, we can create a pretty fruitful dialogue and hopefully a helpful discussion about economic development. With that, I would like to now, if I could, turn it over to Superintendent of Public Construction Megan Degenfelder. You'll all get to answer this question. But I want you to answer the question of, where did you grow up? And when you graduated high school, I would really like to know, what was your perspective on your future? What did you want to become? How did you feel? And how did you see just your future?
Interesting question. Thank you, Josh. Megan Degenfelder. So I grew up in Casper. My family's been in the ag business in the state for my generation, it's the sixth generation. And so came from kind of that environment of ag, deep, deep ag. Family for a few generations farmed outside of Torrington. And then when my grandfather was young, they went west of Casper, and they moved to a one-room shack with no electricity, no running water. They irrigated the place, built it from, gosh, I think it was like 100 acres to over 10,000 at one point, and put everything in, built all the fence line, did all of that. And so that was kind of my upbringing, coupled with my dad's side of the family, multi-generation oil and gas. And so, you know, growing up to me, those kind of legacy industries in our state, it's literally in my blood. It's who I am. And so I think that perspective was always an important one for me, and I always kind of saw my future as giving back to the state, because that's what I saw modeled, you know, before me, that you build something bigger than yourself. And then that's what, you know, from my family with our agriculture business. And so anyway, so it's kind of an interesting perspective then, when you think about economic development and what that means for the state and what my perspective is. And so I've always been a little bit resistant on the idea of, what does economic development mean? You know, I'm just so, it's deeply rooted in our legacy industries here in the state. But I think that there's room for both, and that's what really excites me of the direction that we're heading. I have a very different view of Business Council and economic development now than I did a few years ago, which is a good thing. And so for me, I always knew I wanted to come back, went to the University of Wyoming, all of that. But I guess that was kind of my goal of just, what's good for Wyoming is good for me, it's good for my family and my future family.
Nice. Thank you. Auditor Resinas.
Thank you. I think some of you probably know, I tell you, I'm from Riverton, and I grew up in Riverton. The slightly more full story of that is, well, and I'll, yes. So my great-grandparents homesteaded in Waschiki County, and so we've been sort of from that area. I was actually born in Casper and started out life in Bar Nun, which might explain to you all of my vote on that vote a few months back. Went to Bar Nun Elementary School, moved to Evanston when my father was transferred with AMICO. So he was always an oil and gas guy. Actually, he was a first-generation college student, went to CWC, squeaked it out there, and then did his last two years at UW. He lost his job with AMICO, was laid off in Evanston, and we ended up back in Riverton. I say back in Riverton because both of my folks grew up there. So mostly, that's why I end up saying, yeah, I'm from Riverton. I went to middle school, high school there. When I graduated from high school, I had very little perspective or drive, but I did have exceptionally good grades and a full ride room and board from UW. But I didn't have a lot of direction, and I didn't think very big about my community. And I'm just being very candid. I didn't really know what I wanted to be. My father, again, kind of perspective, really, nobody expected him to go to college, and he somehow got it done. He had taken an accounting class at UW, and he failed it. And he took it again, and he worked really, really hard, and he got a B. And he said, Kristi, you're so smart, this, you know, you should try accounting. And so I was literally like, whatever. So I signed up for some accounting classes and ended up getting an accounting degree at UW, which has worked out. So that's, yeah, I had very little perspective or worldly vision of what economic development was, or what my state would mean to me when I graduated from RHS.
Secretary Gray.
Well, thank you, and it's great to be here. Appreciate Josh's vision and the Business Council's vision on putting this together. I hope this becomes a tradition because we're two years in, and I see your names on a piece of paper, and when the Board takes votes on your recommendations to us. But I've always wanted to, I know some of you, but not all of you, and I think it's great that we have this interaction. I'm Chuck Gray. I grew up in a separated family. My dad lived in Casper, so I'd spend summers with him. And my mom lived in Pasadena, California. And I'd spend the school years with her. My family, my dad, really lived the American dream. He was born in Des Moines, Iowa, in South Des Moines, which was the Italian Quarter. His family were immigrants. And he worked his tail off, went to law school, became an attorney, and was involved in the growth of Ralph's Grocery Company. It was privately owned for a long time, and then was sold by the Di Bartolo family to Kroger. And he was involved in that transaction. And then after that first stage of his life, decided to start purchasing and creating businesses, creating small businesses. And one of the businesses he created was in Casper in 1991, the year after I was born, started a radio business that really, for a long time, was one of the radio leaders. We owned KVOC, the Voice of Casper, which is the longest-running AM radio station on the same frequency in the state of Wyoming. We bought that from Alice Bubeck, who's just a legend in Wyoming radio. And we continue to operate that station lovingly because it's an extremely important part of our state's history. When I graduated high school, I graduated high school from a Catholic school in downtown Los Angeles, commuted every day into downtown. It's called Loyola High. And I remember, I was so focused on, I wanted to go to the Wharton School of Business. I was just, President Trump inspired me. I would watch The Apprentice when I was in junior high, and he'd always talk about Wharton. This is before he ever got into politics. And there was a, in season one, there was a kid that went to Wharton, and he said, that's where I went, it's the best business school in the country. And immediately, that was like, that's where I want to go. And worked really hard, got into there. And I thought, you know, I was kind of torn because I wanted to operate the radio business, but I also got really interested in going into investment banking, which is what most people who graduate Wharton undergrad go into. And ended up not doing that, ended up taking over the radio business after the financial crisis. And that was one of the big decisions in my life. It was really the first adult decision I made was to move to Casper permanently when I was 22 and take over that business, which had been struggling. But I always, growing up, spending summers in Casper, loving that radio business, and what terrestrial radio and the community link that that is, I always wanted that to stay in our family in some way. And it turned out that moving here earlier than I thought was necessary, because otherwise we were going to have to sell the business, and the rest is history. We started a talk show on our AM station, got involved politically that way, and ended up going into legislature for a while. But always thought that I was going to be connected to Wyoming, and I'm just so thankful for the journey that has played out over the last 12 years and being involved in Wyoming public life. Thank you.
Well, Secretary Gray, thanks for answering the first part really well. And then you teed up the second part perfectly, which was, I was going to have you start by saying, how did you get into politics? And since you kind of went ahead and did that, that was great. So Auditor, how did you get here?
I was bullied into it. I mean, I joke, but not really. So when I came out with an accounting degree from UW, I studied and sat and got my CPA exam, and I went for, I took a job with McGee, Hernan, and Pis in Cheyenne. Again, not really having a vision, but saying, okay, here's a job, this is the path, this is what you do, you get a job, and then you buy a house, and you get married, or get married and buy a house, et cetera, et cetera. So I took a job with McGee, Hernan, and Pis, and one of the, interestingly enough, one of the audits I worked on was the Wyoming Business Council. So anyway, that's been a few years ago, about 20. So when I had a baby, and excuse me for speaking somewhat candidly, many of you know I do this, I didn't really want to be a halfway CPA or a halfway mom. And so when you're in public accounting, or at least back then, typically when you had a baby, you needed to go get a government job where you could work 40 hours a week instead of 80. So I took a job with the Wyoming Supreme Court. At the time, I had an infant and eventually had another kiddo. There, I worked up through the ranks a little bit. I started out as an internal auditor and then became the CFO for the court system, which represents all the circuit and district courts throughout the state of Wyoming. In that role, I prepared and ultimately had to present the budget to join Appropriations Committee. I mean, before that role, I wouldn't have known what or who the legislature was if they hit me in the forehead. But that's how I went across the street from the court and started hanging out at the legislature. And sort of like your parents told you about drugs, you know, the whole, like, if you hang around the barber shop, you're eventually going to get your hair cut, you know, despite your best efforts. When you start hanging around the Capitol too much, you're eventually going to run for office. And so that's, anyway, that's how I really became interested in it. And when there was a vacancy in the Auditor's Office, I was approached by a couple people to say, hey, you should consider this. And my first response was, you know, ha, ha, ha. You know, I just, I didn't really, I wouldn't have had the self-confidence to come up with that on my own. But anyway, that's how, water under the bridge.
Thank you. Superintendent.
Another great question. You know, I think I've always really enjoyed the thought of politics, but making things better, right? That's more of what it's about than this whole, you know, political arena. But like I said, from my background of just, you know, you control your own destiny, you have to step up and make things better in your community, and especially coming from industries that, you know, when you look at, you know, federal ownership of land and minerals in the state, whether you're in ag and oil and gas, I mean, policy matters. And so you have to take that seriously. So I started getting involved with Student Council really early on, with Student Body President at NCHS, Go Phillies, Go Mustangs. And then with Student Body President at the University of Wyoming. And so just always wanted to get involved and make change and make things better. Didn't really know what route I was going to take. But when I was 21 years old, I was diagnosed with cancer, and it was a really difficult experience for me. I learned a lot about myself and about, you know, how I see the future and what I want to do with my life, and recognizing that time is limited, and no matter, you know, what your age or circumstance, you got to step up for your community. And so I think that was a big part of wanting to get involved early on. And then, you know, my husband, when we were engaged and then married, he was going through medical school. And so we lived apart, we'd go back and forth. He was in Seattle doing med school and residency, and I was working in Gillette, working in the coal company. And we were just getting by, by the skin of our teeth, getting through that. And so once he finished and was able to come back, it really was just, you know, the stars aligned. I think that was God's plan for me, that the timing worked out to be able to, you know, leave a really high-paying, very flexible job in the private sector and come do this. And I just am thankful every day for that opportunity.
All right. Well, thank you. Now, we're going to do something a little different than you've probably ever done on a panel. And so I'm going to ask for grace in advance, and maybe no punishment later. How's that sound? Can I get, I'm going to make a motion. I'm sensing this is, it could go either way. There's only three of you, so, but could you get a quick vote, like thumbs up? You're good with this? Okay. So Superintendent, if you could kind of scoot down to this end of the table. Auditor, you can stay where you are. And then Secretary, if you could just move down a touch. What we have underneath your name tags are some Scrabble tiles. And so we're going to play a little Scrabble, and you're going to get some help from my Board members. Okay? So if my Board could, it turns out, we have three of these folks, and we have nine of my Board members, so I think the math works out to be four per, no, I'm just kidding. It is going to be a total of four, but there will be three Board members for each of the SLIB members. So if my Board could bring your chair and come up, we're going to play Scrabble. Okay? While my Board is moving toward you with their chairs, I want you to first, look at your tiles, and I want everybody to tell me their highest-value tile and the point total that it is. So what is your highest-value tile? Secretary, what do you have? So you have a W and Y? Well, that's handy. Golly, how did that work out? So W and Y, and those are your highest-value tiles. I believe those are pretty high-value tiles myself. Okay. So Auditor, what is your highest-value tile? And yes, keep those out of Dr. Schaefer's eyesight. He's a Scrabble master, he says. W? Okay. So you also have a W. Both of you have a W, and they're worth four points. And then Superintendent, what do you have? Okay. So the Superintendent has a Q at 10. So here's what we have so far. Right now, if you're keeping score in the audience or at home, we have, the Superintendent is ahead. Okay? All right. So she has a Q, and it's worth 10 points. All right. Yes, Ms. Tomasi? I, yeah, and so, so of course, Ms. Tomasi has found some extra tiles, surprisingly, up her sleeve, she has a few extra tiles. Now, what I'd like to do is take, I'd just like to take one minute, you have one minute, to create the highest-value word with the letters that you have. Okay. So wait, wait. Are you, how's the word, how are the words coming? What words have you created so far? I did hear Ms. Tomasi, who is, she's like, we could use that Y as a vowel. So you don't have any vowels? Oh, well, how do you make words without vowels? Is that what the question you're asking right now? Well, the first thing I'll do is I'll give you some vowels. Okay? So here are some vowels for each of your tables, and then you can go to work. How's that sound? Okay. So what we've learned so far is that vowels are kind of important. And if you're wondering why we're doing, like, basic alphabet stuff, it just, I just want to reinforce that public education is really important. All right. So now you have, I'll give you, I'll give you another minute to come up with the highest-value word possible. No pressure, Dr. Schaefer, but you said... Highest-value English word?
Outlay. That's what Mark Law just came up with.
Not outlaw?
Well, that could be.
It's the same, though.
Okay. You have about 10 seconds left. Over here, we have, well... So we're going to take the, we're going to take the highest-value single word that you have, and time is up. So we're going to, we're going to start down here, we're going to start down here with the, with the Superintendent who had the highest score. She had a Q, which is super-high value, until you don't have a U. So tell me the word, tell me the word that you came up with, Superintendent. Beans. So the Superintendent went from Q, that is 10, to beans, which is seven? So, yeah, yeah, I know, I said English word. Yeah, Derek, we went with the English word. Okay? So you went, you went from Q, which was the highest, to beans, which is seven. It seems symbolic, doesn't it? Okay. So Auditor, your team has come up with which word? Crowd, and that is worth how many points? 11. And you know what? I'm not even going to double-check that math. I feel like the Auditor is the person that we should trust. So so far, the Auditor with crowd is number one with 11 points. Okay. Secretary, your team has come up with?
Outlaw.
Outlaw. And how many points is, it's only nine, but as a graduate from Rollins High, I really appreciate that because we were the outlaws. Okay? So I appreciate that. That's fantastic. Okay. So the very high-value letter that you had, had, ended up with the lowest score. Okay? And so far, crowd with 11 is the highest-value word. Is that correct? Okay. Now, how about if we do this? How about if we take, this is, this is going to be a little interesting because I, we don't have an even number. And so I'm going to say, Auditor and Superintendent, I want you two to get together with all your tiles, but I'm going to take two of your members and bring them over here. So that means Ms. Johnson and Mr. Brown, you are now, and you get to use those other tiles. So you get all those tiles, and you're going to work with them over here, and they're going to work with you. And now, this is where, this is where we're going to change it up a little bit. So you're going to have to kind of keep track. The rules are going to change. So we went from a single letter to a word, and so here's, here's what I want, here's what I want you all to do. Make as many words as you can in two minutes and keep track of the score. As many words as you can, keep track of your total score. You can reuse the letters as many times as you want. So mix and match. You could break up into teams, you can do whatever you need to do. Now, while we're waiting, I think we could probably take some bets. So any bets? Who's betting on the Superintendent and the Auditor coming up with a win? Okay? More vowels. And then how about, anybody, anybody got, Secretary? So it looks like it's even, 50/50, 100% down the line. That's good. That's fantastic. Now, you guys can reuse letters. You can reuse letters. You can just make as many words as you can in, yeah, and count them all. That's right. Yeah. Write them down with the point totals. Because you can just, you can just keep going. It is, oh, thank you for using that word. Complex is the word we were actually looking for. Yeah, you can keep making, you can, you can mix and match. Cow? Yep. Many words as you can. Yep, crown, that counts. Yep? How's the S working for you? It's only one, one point? All right. It looks like this could go on forever, so I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off in 15 seconds. So tally up your scores. Abide. Okay, these are some good words. Okay, who's keeping track? Oh, we have, we have a former Treasurer keeping track, so this makes me feel better, too. Okay, let's go ahead and stop there. Let's go ahead and stop there. That one counts. That one's in. Crow is your last word. Okay. So your, your, your last word? Okay. So let's, let's do this. Let's go ahead and everybody go back to their, their normal seats. Thank you for playing. And then I'm going to, we'll tally up the scores here. So tally up your scores. So tally up your scores.
I think so, yeah. I feel like we did a good job. Great job.
Okay, all out of doubt.
All right.
So, so Kathy, while you work on that, we'll get everybody back to their seats. Oh, we might need to. Okay, do we have the scores tabulated? Okay. Kath, Kathy, it's taken you a long time. You have so many, you gotta carry the one. Okay, so, so Kathy, on Secretary Gray's team, you guys all worked together. You had a number of tiles there. What was your, what was your total score? Eighty-three, eighty-three. Okay, fantastic. Let's, let's see what happened down here. So the auditor, as the auditor, I feel like it's important for you to, to announce the score of your team. Two twenty-four. Okay, okay, all right, so, so. Okay, so the, the, now, now we're gonna discuss this, because here's, here's something that's important about this. We, we learned at the very beginning that the Q was the big winner in the first round, wasn't it? How useful, how useful was the Q in future rounds? You were unable to use it. So you had this thing that seemed like it was super high value, that you, you probably felt pretty good when you were the winner of that first round, right? And and then, when you tried to work with your team, how often did you think to yourself, how do we use this Q? In fact, you don't have to tell me, I already know, because you were still trying to, your team was still trying to convince you that, that QI was an English word. Now, as, as probably the only person who speaks Mandarin in the, in the room, you probably know that, but that was, that was breaking the rules. So the Q wasn't that useful, even though it was high value. Okay, all right. Now, did anybody have a U? You guys had a U? Oh, that would have been handy, right? Okay, that would have been nice. It's only a one, but it unlocks a 10. That's funny how that works, huh? Okay, so what about, what about, what about when you, what about when you worked within the, like, the two groups together? Anybody wanna talk about that? How did that work when you got more tiles? You had more words than you could even keep track of, because you had more tiles. And more brains. Okay, so more tiles and more brains. That's, that seems like a big deal. Secretary Gray, what were, what were your thoughts on, on those, on, and as you worked with just a small set of tiles into a big set of tiles? Right? Yeah, you probably could have gone on for a long time and continued to make words. I mean, there's, there's, I'm sure there is, if someone to, were to like ask Claude AI or ChatGPT, how many words could you make out of this? It would probably come up with a really, really long list. Okay? All right, so we know that more letters and more brains creates a more dynamic situation. Okay? I wanna rewind a little bit, though, and ask you about vowels. How much are the vowels worth? They're, they're worth one point each, right? But are they a big deal? That's kind of interesting, isn't it? The vowels? Gotta have the vowels. Gotta have the vowels. Okay, so we gotta have vowels. The things that are super high value, not always that high value. More people working together with more tiles or capabilities, we could create more words. Right? What was the unsung hero of your group? The S. The S is sort of the unsung hero. In fact, if you think about the two scores, one is about double the other one. Isn't that weird about the S? Doesn't that, isn't that how it works? You basically add it to the end of any word, and then it's, you get, you get double, a little more than double. That's kind of a funny thing, too. I really should have given secretaries' group the S, since you guys had the Q. I feel like I should have probably done that, but it just didn't work out that way. So what the heck does all this mean when it comes to economic development? If I build it up long enough, Jack. Okay, so, so let's, let's break it down for a little bit. Okay, first of all, it's impossible, almost impossible to make words without vowels. Okay, that's sort of the way the English language is, is created. So if you were to think about business or the economy, what the heck are vowels? Everyday workhorse? So in this model of the economy, where the tiles represent capabilities, the vowels can be synonymous with the government. So in, even in the most free market systems, you'd still need a place for policy and the government to play a role. But the government doesn't, shouldn't play the whole role, right? Like, making a word completely out of vowels doesn't make a lot of sense. But if you think about the way words are formed, generally speaking, there are fewer vowels than consonants. But they play an important role. They facilitate the consonants to create words. And, and that's not just a philosophy that, that I think we should hold dear, but I think it's something that we've grabbed a hold of in the Business Council, is that we have a very specific and small role to play. And the more strategic and small and surgical that we are, the better off we are for enabling the free market. And so that's why the vowels in this particular situation were withheld. Because there is an important role there for all of us, and many of us are in, in that space where we wanna play that role. So that's kind of one of the first things, Mr. Brown, of why we play Scrabble. But, but really, why we, why we utilize this model is to help everyone sort of wrap their head around this idea that we've all come to call diversification. And that's not, that's not bad. It's not a bad thing, and we do want to have some of that. But diversification, for the sake of diversification, isn't the point. The point is, the more letters and more brains you have in your group, the more you're going to be able to build new words. And building new words is the same thing as resilience at a community level. When you can mix and match and put things together as a state and at a community level, you'll be able to weather any kind of storms from one thing. If I gave you three letters and said, make all the words you can out of that, and that's all you get, it's pretty tough. It's pretty tough if somebody comes and takes one of those letters away to continue to survive. But the more letters you have, the more capabilities you have, the more brains you have, the better off you are. And so that is also something that we look at when we look at making decisions as a, as a board, is how do we bring more brains to the table and more capabilities to the table, so that our communities can be resilient? So that, Mr. Brown, is sort of a high-level view of why we think of Scrabble when we think of economic development or the economy in Wyoming. So having said all of that, like, I would love to hear your thoughts on it, but also, folks from the audience, any thoughts that they might have observed or or feel kind of with that setup?
Well, you got my wheels turning, and I usually, I do not like icebreakers, so, but this one was all right. I was okay with this one. I, I think it just, it makes me think more about diversification, like you said, of that we still, you still can maintain the words, that your basic ones that me as an individual would have created, right? Our legacy industry, that sort of thing. But we can build off of that. And and actually, when you look at S's and ING, I think the point is that you're taking the basics of that industry and you're building off of it. And I think that's what I've really seen where we're headed with Business Council, is we're taking our legacy industries and supporting them, looking at creating those, those hubs or whatever we're calling them in different areas of the state. And so you build off of the strengths that you already have.
Yeah, so the S's and the INGs can kind of create more. Absolutely. Okay, very, very good, very astute. Auditor.
I, I agree with all that. I think, I think when, when the Business Council really excels, it's when we're sort of the, the final mile. When something was maybe gonna make it anyway, but is, just needed the final shove. That's where we can play a real role. But if, but if we try to force economic development, you know, with a ball full of vowels, we're, we're not gonna get anywhere. Like, if you try to create it from nothing, where nothing is already sort of headed in that direction, you're gonna stall out.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point, because then you get words like, and, ooh, right? Those aren't, those aren't good. Those aren't good.
They sound good.
Yeah. That's right. That's right. Secretary Gray.
Well, I, I think that one of the things the Business Council needs to continue to do, and I really appreciate your leadership, Josh. I mean, I came into the legislature with your predecessor, and, and he was a nice person and did a great job. But I, I think you've led in a little bit of a different way that's really been awesome to watch, and, and I've enjoyed working with you. And I think the Business Council, building synergies across our communities to get to the finish line, is, is really one of the things I wanna continue to work with you on, and, and that vision for our state, because, yes, we're 99 communities, 23 counties, all working separately every day and working hard towards those individual visions that we have for counties and our communities. I ask every single county that comes through my office, what's your vision for your county? But then we're also one Wyoming, and I think that's something that the Business Council needs to continue to think about, is what is that vision for our entire state?
Thank you. I, I have a, I have a question and, and for all of you, and so, and, and I'll ask that, and then I think we could turn it over. I think the audience probably has some questions. And, and before we do that, I do wanna thank you for, one, being incredibly flexible about being here today. And, two, being flexible and, and willing to do things that are kind of a little bit wonky, like play Scrabble at a public meeting. I mean, I think that what it says is that you're all in. You want, you want the best for Wyoming. And you're willing to take some risks. You're willing to, to expose some, some spelling errors. I didn't see any spelling errors. But you're, you're willing to, to step out there and, and do things that might be a little bit unorthodox for the state of Wyoming. And I, I just appreciate that. And I also appreciate that you're willing to, as, as you mentioned, Secretary Gray, like, continue to do this and, and develop a relationship with the, the Business Council Board, so that we can make decisions that are the best for the state. So thank you, and, and I hope you stick around. You don't, like, the minute I turn around, you run off, because you're like, why are we playing Scrabble? I just, I really appreciate that. I have a question about.
I'm not big on board games, so I, it's like a new opportunity for me. I live alone, you know, like, and so it's, it's just awesome to. It's, it's, it was good.
Well, I'm glad we could be an opportunity for growth for you. That's good. So I, I have a question for you about communities, because we, we do have, we have 99 communities, we have 23 counties, we have al- almost, you know, 600,000 people. And, and one of the things that we like to talk about is the idea of local control. We talk about self-reliance and community resilience a lot. And, and so I wanna understand your perspective on this, this, sort of like the state's role in creating that. And how do we, how do we like, live local control and, and be able to enable local control as best we can when it comes to economic development? And, and anyone can start.
All right, great question. Again, you know, I, I come into this conversation with background in economics. So I have my master's degree in economics, and I've always been a real free market economist, Adam, Adam Smith, you know, invisible hand. And so have always, you know, thought of things kind of black and white in that sense of, of what the role is. And so it's always been kind of a struggle. I, I challenge myself when I start thinking about this, and that's why I like that the recent relationship that, that we have and the role of the Business Council to really recognize that it can't be black and white. This is, this is real life, real communities, real people. And so I think, again, like we've discussed, building off of the industries that exist, instead of trying to, to start brand new and focusing on those rather than the nice-to-haves, the things that we might like and, and we think might lead to, to a more thriving community, but the ones that, that we know will. And I think this whole concept of setting up infrastructure is, is really important, because we can use that infrastructure for, for different projects. But it, it is an asset that we as a state, or those communities, rather, can maintain long-term, depending on the shifts in the economy. And so I really like that approach, too, because that's a real asset, that at the end of the day, no matter what happens, that community is going to have. And so I, I think that that's, that's the important balance, and that's where I've been able to say, okay, this, this could be a place for the state. But always want to make sure that we're being careful with that. I think less is more in terms of what we're doing as a state. But in a place like Wyoming, you know, there is, there is a role. So I don't know, that was a lot all mixed up, but.
No, no, I think that, that, that makes sense. And I think that, you know, kind of the idea is, how do we, how do we continue to empower our, our local communities to sort of decide their own destinies and provide them that local control and, and be the, the supporting role, not necessarily the main role? Yeah.
I, I, local control is very important, and we all say that, and the legislature says that, and then, you know, but it's, it's an uncomfortable balance and compromise all the time, because I, and I think about this a lot. One of the questions I asked your staff at, at one of our meetings, and is, what's the break-even point on population? I mean, what sort of population does a town have to have before they can actually survive on their own? And it's, I think, imprecise, but it's not 200, you know? And so I think it's important to say this out loud, as long as we are all invested in having small towns in Wyoming, and I always hold up shoshone, because I'm Fremont County, and I'm like, you know, do we want, do we want shoshones? Because if we do, it's a, it's a subsidy. We, we can empower them to an extent. But I think that's a reality that, that we as the board and, and the legislature has to face is, do you subsidize or do you let them dry up? Because that, you know, because they can't exist on their own. So I think that's always a, a balance, which isn't bad, but I think it's something we maybe need to talk about more. And, and where that, where that line is, and what's a, what's a, you know, what a healthy relationship is there. I think about, I mean, my, my mother went to school in Grass Creek. That's not a thing anymore. And the world didn't end, you know? We, we have lost small towns in the same sense that we've added some, too. So, so that's, that's what I'm thinking about a, a lot now, is what's a, what's a healthy level of, of empowering these small towns, but also recognizing if we just say, hands off, figure it out, you know? We have, you know, if you're not above 5,000 or 10,000 people, you're probably not gonna.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a real, that's a, that's real. And that is that we, there is going to be some sort of balance. I do, I, I doubt that there's going to be some formula that gets it right. I think it's gonna be, it's definitely gonna be some sort of a balance. I mean, there are a lot of factors that play in. Population is, is a thing. When it comes to economics, the, the higher your population, the more chances you have to have enough tiles to make it work. And that's, that's a good thing for, for the economy. Your proximity to that could also be important. Right? And so, yeah, the resources that you have. And so it, it's, it's not as simple, it's not as simple as this number. This, this number of population means something. I think there are other factors. But I do think it's, it's worth the conversation, and it's important for us to start to dig in a little bit lower and, and deeper into the foundational problems that, that a small community faces, because they're real. So, yeah, thank you for that. You are, you are not, Dr. Schaefer, I have the microphone for a reason. No, I, let's, let's go for it. So, Dr. Schaefer?
Sorry, Mr. Secretary, it's just, it's, it's the opportune time. So, so Madam Superintendent, you talked about markets. Many of us believe in the free market, especially from an economics perspective. Madam Auditor, you talked about people. So one of the things that has fundamentally shifted over the last maybe four or five decades is that economic markets and economic opportunity aren't necessarily the sole driver of where people go. And now people, because there's more economic opportunity generally, then we have people to take them, are, become the driving factor. Here's my question. There are, social markets are a real thing, and we're seeing it happen with population dynamics across the, the US. Florida has a lock on a certain social market, and it's doing certain things. What role does the Business Council play in helping communities build and utilize social markets to drive our future? And Chrissy, you sort of, sorry, Madam Auditor, you sort of hit on that. But, but that's a question we grapple with, I think, is, is what, what role do we play in building areas that actually drive social interest and ultimately, social markets? And so I'm just curious what, what your thoughts are on that.
Thanks, Josh.
I, I mean, I, that's a great question. I think that we're all struggling with mildly because we all, you know, in the last board meeting was, was a perfect example where we had a project in for, in front of us that we all liked and we all knew that that kind of project is probably not the best use of, of these limited funds. So I, I don't know the answer to your question. I don't know what the role is. Maybe not the same, not, not the role we have been playing because I don't know that that's working. But to, to not, to not recognize the reality that some of those quality of life things are, are a synergy is, is also not realistic too. So that was a real nice way of saying I have no idea.
Well, you know, and I, I think that's a great question. It's one of the things I was hoping to talk about today. And I, I really would ask the board, I, I bring this up a lot to Josh and sometimes we joke around about it a little bit. But I really want you to think about retail, uh, some of these, you know, some of these brands that we just don't have in Wyoming. And obviously we have population challenges with that, but restaurants, retail. And I was going to ask Mark today, what happened to Jack's? What happened to Jack's on Del Range? You know, we, we've got to get the retail, we got to get the restaurants. I mean, I think it's part of what, one area where we, we, we struggle. And I, I think that, you know, I've thrown out in our meetings, some chains that, you know, but I really think that's something that is important, um, is, is thinking about some of these brands that, that, uh, we can bring in to some of our communities, so.
It is an interesting question and I don't think I have a definitive answer on it. But I don't, I still don't think that that's our role because I look at it of like the hierarchy of needs, right? And so you have a community, if we can provide those stable, good jobs, then that frees up people and their time and their family to be able to give back to their community through their churches, through their, um, organizations to create kind of this social. But that, that's in a perfect world, right? And you see the areas where it doesn't happen. I think that's why we're, we're struggling so much with it. But I still, I just don't think I can come along with that being our role at this point. But I hear you. I mean, I'm a millennial, you know? And my husband and I talk about where we want to live and what's important to us. It's shifted. It's, it's different than, than how it was in the past. So, um, great question, Joe. Dr. Schaefer, excuse me.
Looks like we've got a, a couple of questions down here. I, I think for sure with, for sure with my board, you can call them by their first name. But I'm not sure with your, no. All right, Kathy, Kathy, uh, hit the buzzer first.
So I appreciate everything you're saying and Auditor Racine. It, it, we have grappled with this through the last six years that I've been on the Business Council. And it is, it is not only the small communities, but the change in administration in small communities. Maybe the vision doesn't match in the new elected officials as it did in the last. And they don't have the same, um, motive to, or motivation to get projects into that community. I think, and I'm going to, um, really tout the Business Council because we have some programs now that are amazing. The A to A program, uh, which brings education to small communities. And I think that's the key. I think the key is to get these communities on the same page with each other and find out where their stakeholders are, whether they're elected officials or just volunteers. But I do think that that is a really important thing is the education of the communities. So that's, that was just a comment.
Thanks, Kathy. Um, I'm going to try to ask a question, but if you would just humor me for a minute for, I'm just kind of a case study idea or thoughts, maybe some things I've gone through and, and projecting maybe big picture. Because I think, um, well, let me just, let me just back up. So when I was third grade, my parents landed in Las Vegas. It was 175,000 people. Now it's 3 million. So I've seen some impact, love it or hate it. And, and it was off to the farm in South Dakota and I went to school in Brookings in 79, 80, 1980, they deregulated the, uh, uh, the financial areas. South Dakota uncapped the usury rates. And as a result, the financial sector blew up there. And now South Dakota holds 3.4 trillion dollars in financial assets. I mean, there wasn't anything going on there. I mean, I'm majoring in ag agricultural education, right? And I could go make three times that parking cars in Caesar's Palace than, than, than going and being an ag teacher. And, um, so I throw that out. And now I would say, if you look at South Dakota now, 40 years later, I think arguably you could call the financial sector a legacy industry in South Dakota. So 40 years from now, what are we going to look back in Wyoming and say, that was, that was brilliant? That was a game changer. This is what, this is what we're doing now to make a difference. And all of my kids want to stay here. They're here and, and, but, you know, I got a text from a friend with, with Gen Z's, um, and bordering on millennials. And they're just struggling, trying to think, well, am I going to get a job here? What do I do? One's got a special needs kid and, and they don't, you know, would qualify for Medicaid if they moved to, if they moved to, uh, to Colorado to get the services he needs to be covered. Right now they're staring down a $42,000 bill that we're doing a thing for. So I, I'm saying if we can get a fly, a flywheel big enough with this state, we can have a lot more empathy for Shoshone and those projects and those kinds of things. And I've seen it in other states. So from your perspective, what are we doing today that's going to, that's really, that from your perspective, you think that, is it crypto? Is, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but so, sorry for the long, long question. And, and I don't know if there's an answer, but.
Well, I remain optimistic and I truly believe, call me a Pollyanna, that we are going to grow the market domestically and we are going to find new markets for coal. And that coal is going to have a comeback, not only domestically, but we are going to begin exporting it, uh, in larger volumes. And I wanted to get that out there because we haven't, we're back with Trump, golden age. And we've got to take this opportunity to, to get to the finish line on being able to export our coal to other markets. And I really, I really want the Business Council to take that on. We need a working group. We just, we, we can't just blow this opportunity we have. We, we have got to get this coal export terminal cited. We've got four years to do it and we need minds to, to think about it and to get it to the finish line. And I know, I know it might not be, it's not new. But I, I really want to ask you to, to, to double, to, to think more about our legacy industries. I think the board has tried to reorient in that direction. And I think Josh's leadership has helped a lot in this. And I appreciate, I think a lot of the projects we were getting in early 23, I know a couple of them didn't work out. And in, in the second half of 24, we're trying to, to do that. But I, I don't want to miss that opportunity to, uh, to, to tout our core industries and the fact that thinking about them in new ways is, is one of the ways that I think we're going to be very successful in Wyoming.
You know, I continue to think that every one of the Business Council board members and staff is way more equipped than I am to talk about economic development. But what I have seen that I think we, we are doing well is there's no, I think we've diversified our economy a lot more than it might appear on the surface because there's no silver bullet. But that's the whole point. Economic diversification means lots of little mosquitoes going like this. And, and we've actually done that pretty well. The Business Council, um, you know, the governor, the prior SLIB board has done a lot with, uh, you know, firearms industry, different, just new and fun and, and weird stuff adding, adding here and there. And so the big picture, all of those, all of those things are, are adding up to a lot more diversification than I think anybody's gotten credit for because it's not one big thing that has come in and saved us, which is exactly the opposite of what we need. I don't, you know, it's, it's, that's kind of how we, we get in these situations as we hitch all our, you know, put all our eggs in one basket. The, the one, the one problem I, and this is sort of beating the dead horse we already talked about. I do think that's happening and sort of, we're ending up with some winners and losers in terms of municipalities, um, which is hard for us as politicians. And I'll use Sheridan as an example. Sheridan is hot, you know? We have manufacturing going in there. Everybody wants to live in Sheridan. You know, real estate's good, you can get jobs there. It's a really nice place to live. Uh, but that, there is such a vibrancy there. Does anybody here from Sheridan? Oh, oh, well, I didn't know that.
Almost like you staged that.
I didn't. Um.
But I remember, I remember when I moved there 30 years ago, if you lost your job, if you lost your job, you're going to have to move, right? But if you get into that, uh, uh, light manufacturing sector and, and it doesn't work out there, you just see that. And I used to see that when I lived in Minnesota a long, long time ago. You know, nobody ever uprooted their family. They just went to work for somebody else that was a better fit.
And there's a synergy there now that's very cool and very attractive to families and all that comes with it. So all they need now is like, oh, here, you know, the Business Council, what does Sheridan need from the Business Council? Here's a little icing on the cake, you know, of a project you already have going. But, and again, I think maybe, you know, Cheyenne is doing real, really well. Sheridan's doing really well, but, but of, for every, for every Sheridan, there's a, you know, Thermopolis, which by all accounts should, should be an amazing place to live. They have amazing outdoor opportunities, um, really cute little small town and their population is going the wrong way, you know? So anybody here from Thermopolis? Oh, well, I didn't know that. Love Thermopolis. But yeah, they're, they're, they, they're not, they're not winning right now. That's not close to Thermopolis.
Yeah, I, I think what you're, what you're talking about is that, one, it is going to take a lot of little things. But two, it is, it is going to be, we are going to have localities that, that are going to, going to try to figure it out and move forward. And there are going to be some that are going to struggle. And I, I do appreciate Ms. Tomasi mentioning the idea of education and empowering people at that level so that they can make those changes because we do think that lasting change isn't, doesn't come from outside in, it comes from inside out. And so I think that that's a, a really key component of that. Superintendent, did you have something to add to Mark Law's question?
Sure. So I, so I think twofold. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this. I think number one is, um, natural gas. I think I would take a little bit different stance in natural gas versus coal. I've worked in both the industries and I see liquefied natural gas and the potential for worldwide shipment of that to be the solution that we have. We have the technology when other countries don't. In China and those Asian, huge Asian markets, they have metallurgical coal. Sure, we have sub bituminous coal, but it's still on the margin looking at liquefying natural gas and sending it, I think, is, um, is the solution and what we have here. Um, and so I, I would say that that, number one, focusing on that legacy. But then number two, um, and you alluded to it, it's tech. Tech, AI, um, uh, digital assets, we have to, have to jump onto that. Um, and the biggest thing that we're hearing from, from those folks in those sectors is preparing students in the education space to be able to take on those jobs. And so I think that if we can do that and we can welcome that sector, plus with, with particularly oil and gas, then, then I think that that's where we really thrive in the, in the next hundred, you know, 50, 100 years. But, but we have the potential to, to develop both of those things here and, and we've got to do legacy and future.
Yeah, and thanks for, thanks for that. And we, thank you for, for joining us, Treasurer Meyer. Your, your schedule's pretty darn busy and we appreciate you making time for us and, and spending a little time. We're kind of at the, at the, he's, he's got, he's got a lot of Scrabble to play. He's also going to have to tell us where he grew up, what color his tricycle was and all of those things. But, uh, but right now, um, I think more than anything, we can, we could probably move into a little bit of Q and A. Um, and Treasurer Meyer, be, before we do that, maybe you could just talk a little bit about as you see projects come before you and your role on SLIB, what are some of the things that you think about as you're making the decision to, to, to say yes to a, a project or no?
Well, I think the first thing that I look at is I use some of the experience that we have in our office. And that's to ask the question about due diligence and whether that's really been completed. And when I say due diligence, I want to make sure that the money that's being spent or allocated, you know, has a good, uh, I guess, outlook of actually being to, to, to get that payback back. You know, whether it was to the community on exit, on more taxes, uh, you know, the development as, as the Business Council looks at it, uh, they're, they're trying to grow our communities, grow our capacities. And so I want to make sure that they've done their due diligence and I actually do mine. And, uh, I, I could tell you for the most part that these guys want to make sure that when they put the money out and it comes to the SLIB board, that they have done, done, done the work. And they know whether or not the, uh, the folks will actually perform the way that they think they will. And, uh, essentially one of the things that, that I tell some of the people that want to shop their wares at our office is that, uh, I, I want to make sure that the people are coming to us is that they've got more money than what it takes to pave the parking lot. Because you've got a lot of people that come in there with great ideas, you know? But that's about as far as it goes. And a great idea will only take you so far. You've got to do a lot of work with people to let them understand it. And some people are just really, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to get, get some of these things across to folks. And, uh, I'd, I'd say that, uh, uh, in particular in the legislative process this year, it's, it's going to take a lot more education than one could even imagine. And, uh, some of the things that have happened have been really kind of interesting. But yeah, as far as the Business Council, uh, that's the first thing I do is make sure the due diligence has been gun, done and we're going to get our payback.
Thank you, Treasurer. And, and really, I, I want to touch on something that you sort of, sort of mentioned. And that's this idea of that they've maybe got a, a little more than, than needed to just pave the parking lot. So, I mean, are you talking about having skin in the game or having, you know, kind of bringing their share to the, to the party? Tell me, tell me a little bit more about that.
Well, I think that's, that's just a, a good way to put it, having skin in the game. And know that, uh, uh, in, like, when we invest with people, we want to make sure if, in private equity and stuff is that we have a partner that's committed, that essentially, uh, what, what their outcome is going to be what we think our outcome should be. And so we're all on the same team. If you've got somebody that doesn't have that skin in the game, you don't get that buy-in. And you really have to have the buy-in so you know that you don't have to be looking over their shoulder every day. They're doing everything they can to make sure that is successful.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I, I think now we're at, we're at a spot where we could take some questions from the audience and from, from my board and, and folks that have come. Thank you for, for joining us. I don't believe we'll be taking any from, from Zoom land. So if you joined us, uh, you'll, you'll get to watch, but not be able to, to participate. So I'll open it up to questions and run around the audience. Awkward silence is one of my favorite tools.
And you wheeled it well, Josh. You wheeled it well. So is listening to kind of some of these questions, starting with where Dr. Schaefer started, thinking about that social concept, and I really like where you headed with this auditor, talking about Sheridan in particular. What do we view, or what do you view a SLIB in terms of how we could? This camera is like super close to me. It was a little awkward when it turned, sorry. Um, sorry, Zoom land. So anyway, so how do you view, I would say, Business Council and also your role on SLIB in terms of how we can contribute to these communities? You know, we have multiple mechanisms, whether it's education like Ms. Tomasi talked about, through things like revenue recapture off of our projects where those funds stay with the local communities, whether it's a Sheridan or a Shoshone, to put back into their own growth and, and kind of create some skin in the game for themselves. I guess kind of a long-winded question. How do you view that role in terms of the overall structure? What's our job to support and to give into those communities versus what do we need to be getting back at a state level, if anything, out of these kind of projects?
Great question. I, I think you alluded to a couple of them there. I think until they're ready to have skin in the game, as, as the Treasurer was mentioning, and be able to, to put that money in and get to that recapture project, so we'll talk about in a second, it's, it's the education piece. And I think it sounds like the Business Council. And I think it sounds like the business council has been doing a good job of that, of sitting down and saying, here's how you can unlock growth. Um, here are the types of projects that make more sense and may be a nice to have type of thing. And creating kind of communities of practice, you know, where, where they're learning about what that process is. And then be able to come with skin in the game, be able to develop those projects. That then I, I do think that that is a good tool to unlock the revenues then for the local community. We've built it, they come, and then it is that community that can reinvest that money. And so I guess it's that concept of getting them to be self-reliant, right, over time. And so it's that multi-step process, which I think is, it's, I think that's what business council is kind of doing right now, right? And so I am excited to see if, if that works. I mean, I think that's what we have to see, does that model work? Um, and then if it does, we keep doing it. If we don't, we rethink it. But I think step one is building that understanding of what projects make sense. Two is we'll help you get over the finish line, but then reinvest that in what the next project is. And then we're going to move on to the next town and community.
I would echo that and just our, our willingness and ability to say no when something is not ready. And we're real bad at it. And you guys are a little bit better than us, but not awesome. And I mean that in the most loving way, but, but we can't, you know, I, we, it's, it's hard to, to say no to some of these, uh, but, and I do think that's, that's it is. If there's not a real good plan with skin in the game, it's time to go back and sharpen your pencils. And we've seen some projects come back and say, yes, we do now have a better project and you've made us put our heads together. And now here's, now you, business council, can you please be the final mile on our project? As opposed to, whoa, we're small, we can't do anything, do the whole thing for us, which we've all said yes to for years. So we, no one has set that expectation up except us.
You know, I think that, uh, one of the things you had to look at, uh, when, when somebody comes in is to make sure that they've availed themselves of all the other partnership opportunities, whether it's grants or whether it's other areas that are, are in, in federal in nature, uh, federal tax credits. There's, uh, over a billion dollars worth of Indian federal tax credits available out there. Uh, that, you know, that we can basically leverage what the business council is doing. Another where place you can leverage what the business council is doing is with opportunity zones. Now, opportunity zones have a particular problem and is that they're all by census tracts. And essentially you've got a problem with most of them, that they're not the best piece of land that you could look at. Uh, and there's, there's an opportunity today to actually, I also saw on the WCD A board. And what, what we've done is, uh, put together a, a package that the Realtor Association, National Realtor Association has endorsed. And that's actually to have affordable workforce housing, uh, basically be specific to opportunity zones. So it's a specific type of thing. And so that's one of the biggest obstacles that we have in our economy, whether it's in Wyoming or other places, is someplace where you need skilled workers, but you don't have houses. And so that's kind of a catch 22, but, but trying to look at it in, in a, in a big picture thing about where the obstacles are and then adding the things that the business council can add. We've got a situation where, uh, our, uh, state GDP was like 10 years ago, 58 billion plus, and now it's under 50 billion. And so you look at it, you've got $10 billion less capital out there basically in the financial market. So how do you, how do you actually try to get other people's money back in the state? Opportunity zones is a great, great concept to, to work on. Uh, Senator Tim Scott, I've been working with him, been working with Senator Barrasso. And I've got a call tomorrow to change some things in the SEC with Senator Lummis. And what that's particularly going to do is change the way that, that money comes into, can come to our state. And basically it's looking at a real estate investment tax trust. And I don't know, does, who understands how you get the benefit of opportunity zones? Okay, I don't see too many people. I'm going to quickly go, go through it. Essentially, right now, the state picks it, uh, in this plan, the builders would pick where they're going to build because they know the best place where the land is there, where the infrastructure is there. And so that crosses that bridge off because the WCA does that with federal tax credits right now. And so you turn it over to the housing authority to let the builders build where they know they should build. Now you've got to get capital, capital to it. And essentially the benefit of an opportunity zone, let's say you're a builder and you've got $10 million worth of income that's come in on a project, plus the profit. And right now, the way it's structured is that you can take 21% of your taxes that you would pay on capital gains, reinvest the whole $10 million. And at the end of that, you get your, basically your $2,100,000 back tax-free. And so that's one of the best legal tax shelters that this nation has. And there's been, I think, 50 or 60 billion dollar, dollars already put in place in the, in the last Trump tax code. And the new Trump tax code has got some, are trying, there are people are trying to get some wrinkles in it. Uh, you know, specific purpose, affordable housing and workforce housing is something I've been working on. I know it's important. Another thing that they're trying to do is let the regular person through a real estate investment tax trust, particularly like in $10,000 blocks, to actually put your money into it. But there's a, there's a group back there that's trying to say, well, let's have this for the ordinary man too. So if you're making enough money to get 24% or even if it's 18%, whatever you make or 36%, basically bring it back to, to regular income rather than just the, the, the capital, uh, you know, uh, income. So that I think makes a, will make a big, big difference. And, uh, uh, that's something that I know Donald Trump will understand because he's a builder. And I think if you asked him, would you rather build where you want to build or where some bureaucrat says there's a census track? I think I know what the answer is, is, is going to be on that. So those are the things that we're looking at to get partners with what we're doing here in Wyoming. And there's all kinds of partners and, and really, uh, the, the grant writer, I think, is probably one of the most important person in any community or for any builder or developer, because they essentially know where those pots are. And they can leverage, and I know that these guys have a lot of leverage in a lot of their projects, where, whether it's a local community through their matches, or whether it's a person ponying up and getting the skin in the game, or different areas. So a lot of it is about getting, you know, together with people that you might not know, but somebody else knows. And, and basically having that, that type of a, of a synergies between a lot of different, different people involved.
Great, thank you, Treasurer. Uh, Superintendent, did you want to add something before I? You bet.
Just in thinking of, you know, I think a lot of things what we're doing, right? Um, to, to Derek's question that, that that is happening. But I would just add, um, two things that I think should be added. And since we're all together here too, and there's been a lot of, um, talk about, um, the Community Enhancement Fund, um, I'm just going to be really blunt and say, I think we have to do away with that. Because I think a piece of this is we have to make sure that our communities know the rules of the game and what, what kind of our vision is. And so I, I just, I think that that is, is not in line with a vision and should, should maybe go away. So just throw that out. And then making sure that we are tracking, um, the return that we're getting on these projects. We always estimate the return, but how are we checking those? Um, maybe in these regular meetings, we go through projects, how are we doing? You have to be able to admit, you know, some have been failures, but here's where the successes are. And we tweak and we change where we're headed. So I think those two things would be valuable in moving forward to the process.
And, and Josh, I mean, I think one of the things I, I wanted to discuss here is we retool the business council. And I do think, you know, I wouldn't, I, I know some people may be getting down about some of the legislative conversation and the budget and, but it's an opportunity. And I think Josh is getting this, that, and I think the board, while I don't interact with you as much through Josh, it's clear that you're getting it too, that this is an opportunity for us to retool the business council, some of the conversations around the funding. And, you know, I, I, for Christmas, my staff got me a, because, you know, I'm big on election integrity. Uh, they got me a plaque for my desk. It says, "Election integrity is more than just an attestation." Because we're trying to move away from attestations towards, you know, stronger measures. They could have also gotten me. I'm a big believer in state revenue recapture. It could have gotten me that plaque as well. And this really needs to be reformed. We, you know, this is an investment that the state is making and I'm all for local control. It's great. But if the state's making the investment, the state needs to recoup the same percentage of the project costs that it puts in. That's just a business practice. And this 25% cap, it needs to go away. Whether we're going to do it in rule, whether we're going to do it in statute, it really needs to be fixed because it's not in line with market practices. And, um, all for local control, we can talk about local distributions, but, uh, which they do all the time. But I, I think that we need to really ramp up state revenue recapture and align it with the management audit report that the legislature released in 2016, that the revenue recapture is going to match the percentage of the project cost that the state puts in.
So a lo- a lot of good things to, to think about there. Um, I appreciate the, the discussion on each of those. We'll go back and review the, the recordings so that we can, uh, drive, drill down on those even more. But, but I think you're, you're all right. There are a number of different things that we need to be doing. This is not a simple problem, so it doesn't have one answer. It's a complex problem, so it has a lot of different answers that we're going to have to work on at the same time. So I appreciate that. Great question, Mr. Smith. That, uh, definitely got things going. Who would like to go next? So let's, let's try to keep that silence just a little longer. I think some people are about to crack. So and then if not, we'll come back to you. Mr. Krieger.
Thank you much. So I want to drill deeper a little bit on this, the coal thing, because Secretary of State, I, I agree with you on, on that we have an opportunity there. We've talked a lot about free markets too today. And so we've run some analysis and you look back in 2001, 32 states in this country, their main source of generation for electricity was coal. That's today is only 10 states. And Superintendent, or Madam Superintendent, to your point, a lot of folks have shifted to gas. So I'd be interested in each of your perspectives on how do we, because I agree, we have a huge resource in coal. How do we turn that tide in these other states? Because that's really where it is, right? We, we export to 25 states in this country. How do we turn that tide? How do we convince them that coal is valuable, is good for them, and they need to continue to use it and have more of it?
Well, go ahead, let me go first. We, we have to, uh, reverse two decades of intentionally created uncertainty from the radical left. Whether it's from ESG, the Clean Power Plan that Obama put into place in 2012, which was ultimately reversed, excuse me, 2015, but it was ultimately reversed, but created a lot of uncertainty. And we have to push the envelope on, on doing that domestically. We have the opportunity to do that right now. And, and focus on the need for, uh, resilience in the grid for that, uh, for, for the need for that certainty in, in the grid uh, that people are looking for, that the customers are looking for, that goes beyond sort of this green agenda that, that they teach in corporate America, that is inconsistent with what Wyoming, what American, the American people want. And we also have to look at other markets. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying here. Um, and, and that is a challenge, trying to grow the domestic market. But this is why I always push the coal export deal. Uh, be great for your boss. I mean, I, I don't know why, he's kind of passive on this. And I, I've, I've had a lot of conflict with him, but in the first term when we had an opportunity. And I want him to get where, where, where we can do it in the second term. It's going to require a working group, it's going to require a state-based strategy. It'll be really good for, you know, I, I don't know why he doesn't want to become more active in the space in his administration. But we got to get it to the finish line. And, um, I'm happy to meet with you on that. We need a working group, we need a strategy. And it might take, you know, and Kurt has, uh, has posed this a couple of times. You know, the idea of the State Loan and Investment Board investing in a vehicle. And the problem we have right now, right, is because the vehicle that we had, meaning the, the corporate, the corporate entity that wanted to site a coal export terminal, uh, went broke because it took us too long to, to, to get the case before the Supreme Court on the Interstate Commerce Clause issues. So we don't have, we don't have a corporate entity right now. Now, I think we could find somebody if they saw we were going to fight. And we had a coherent strategy because President Trump is clearly going to permit the facility. And at that point, the only obstacle is the state of Washington or whatever state we choose on the West Coast. Um, but, you know, the Treasurer's talked about us investing from the permanent fund in that. I'm not opposed to that. We've got to get an investor. Um, and I think that's one of the things that, uh, this, I know it seems pie in the sky, but I think that if we show, the state shows that we're willing, and, and look, I'm a, I'm a Freedom Caucus guy. I'm a low government, I'm a Freedom Caucus guy, I'm a founding member. But if we show the market that we are going to fight for our core industries, I think it increases the chances exponentially that there will be, uh, folks that are going to invest in it. And that's why I think it's so important that we show that leadership.
Could be, Josh, I'd like to reply to some of those, those things. You know, I, I think it is to be able to support our industries. And that's why in our offices that we've already got a, uh, a, a preliminary ruling that if we buy a land in, in Washington State, that, uh, will actually have standing before the Supreme Court. Essentially the same thing that we did in Nebraska v Wyoming, where we bought land right in the middle of the, uh, uh, recovery area for the whooping crane, that when Wyoming went to court, they had perfect standing because they were a Nebraska citizen right in the middle of that. Uh, so I went over the 5,000 and some pages in the, uh, uh, basically the environmental impact statement for that whole process that we had in there. Uh, most of it frankly were just people with their addresses and numbers and, and things. But the crux of it was, uh, Calhoun County, that essentially they did not want coal coming through their, their county uh, because of the coal dust. And, uh, the coal companies will say, well, but we put this, uh, you know, this polymer on top of it to keep the dust down. But folks, as long as you can see coal in a coal car, they're going to say there's dust there. You know, so some of the things we need to look at is probably repurposing, uh, things like the, uh, the, the carbon in these windmill blades or something, or figuring out some way to actually cover the cars. One of the people that we work with is KKR, they've got 5,000 coal cars. And they're probably setting somewhere, you know, on a siding. And so if you want to be able to try to do something that would probably move the needle a little, little bit, is find someplace in Wyoming that wants to modify the coal cars so we can take away that particular issue. Now, what we're going to do is that we're going to look in Calhoun County and try to find an investment that's going to make money as an investment in Calhoun County in the state of Washington. And we'll be in the exact place where we have that problem. We've already had, you know, talks with the unions out there. I'm not necessarily a full union guy, but the unions are for building a coal port out in, in the state of Washington. And so there is, I'd say, a, a beginning of a critical mass. And frankly, if I can't do it that way, I'll put my own money into Washington State politics and try to get rid of the county commissioners. You know, I mean, you have to get that, that intense and have that kind of leadership where you're not going to stop at anything to actually help our industries. Now, one of the things that I put forth that could have helped our industries in the long run, which the Secretary of State is diametrically opposed to, and, and is beginning to get enough money through a generational fund that we can essentially, if we wanted to, we could take away in, in, probably in year 61, all of the severance tax that coal companies pay, or all of the severance tax that our, our, our industry pays in natural gas or oil production. But people sometimes think, they say, well, if you're going to have more money, all you're going to do is grow government. And so in that stead, I've talked to Senator Bo Bittman, and we're going to look at a constitutional amendment that is going to basically limit excess spending. Now, we need your guys' help with that. And the reason we need your help with that is because California, Colorado didn't get it right. And so if we're going to move on this, the people that are trying to develop the economy, you need to tell us where and exactly how to put this in place. Because it can't be a one-size-fits-all situation. Yeah, and the Secretary was against basically making the Permanent Mineral Trust Fund stronger and putting in $25 billion into the Permanent Mineral Trust Fund over the course of the next 60 years. And he's on record of saying that not two days ago.
So I'm going to jump in right there. I feel like, I feel like now is a perfect opportunity to, I, I'm going to jump in because I- I want the superintendent to be able to weigh in on Rob's question, and then we're going to take it back to the audience, perhaps even Mr. Smith, we'll see, and go on from there. And then we'll probably wrap up here in about, let's see, I've got four politicians up there. Each of them are going to talk for a lot longer than I thought. No, this is not a debate. I am the host. Madam Superintendent, can you please answer Rob's question?
That's a great question, Rob, and I think is critically important. I think the answer is fairly simple, and I think it all is just economics. If we can create a level playing field for these industries to be able to compete with one another, it's simple economics. We know that affordable, reliable electricity is the answer for these communities. And so even when you get into these left-leaning states, Washington, California, when it starts hitting the economics, the pocketbook of the people there, then that starts changing direction. And so I think all based on deregulating, doing away with a lot of the subsidies that we've had, creating that even playing field, that's how we went over the other states. It's just simple economics. And that extends too to what our portfolio is internationally, because you do have to look at the economics of it. I think that coal productivity domestically is the direction that we need to go. When I look at my master's thesis was the elasticity of demand between coal and natural gas exports to Asia. And so that's where, when you just run the numbers of the comparability of resources, that's where LNG, I think internationally, is the better bet. I don't know, I'd be interested to hear what you think of it right now. But anyway, and so I think that that's what it is. It's just, it's economics. It doesn't have to be all of the political posturing of this, you know, of the different parties. Just get down to economics and people, we know their number one issue is the economy, and if they can't afford their electricity bills, then that moves voters.
Thank you. Mr. Lance.
So I want to go back to something that the auditor said, which is our ability to say no. I think we put the SLIB in a bad position at times when we don't say no at the recommendation level. And so I'm really curious as to what metrics we should consider that you find compelling either to say yes or to say no. And I know we have work to do on rules and other things, but I think if we're going to get quality projects, if we're going to truly look at the diligence that the Treasurer mentioned and act on it, it would be helpful for us to know how you all look at those metrics, what would help you to be able to say no to some of these projects. I'm mindful of Gillette, I'm mindful of Sheridan. They were successful in athletics because their elementary school team ran the same plays that their junior high team ran, that their high school team ran. And if we follow a similar metric where we're asking the same questions that you all want to know, and we're collecting similar information, it may help us to net out more quality projects over time.
Well, I think, you know, that's a great question, and one of the things I wanted to impart today is I look at, you know, in the beautiful dossier they create, I look at everybody's votes, it's one of the things I really examine, and they list out every single one of the members, and yes or no next to it, not just the aggregate vote. And I am worried, and I've said this in a couple meetings, that with the loss of some of your members that really emphasize that, the need for tightening up, and then some of the actions of the board in the last two years. And I was already noticing it a little bit, but especially in light of the action at the last meeting, that that fiscal rectitude might wane a little bit. And I want to encourage you to stand strong. We need to resolve the recreational centers, the community centers, we need to resolve that in rule. It's frankly a different program, I think, from the original intent, but I do think it needs to be clear from the start, not on the back end. And Kristi made that point when she made the motion last time. And Josh, I've not had a chance to follow up with you, but I truly hope that we get this to the finish line in clarifying this. I think we've hit that point, we've crossed the Rubicon, and then the legislature can examine what sort of program those great projects would in fact go into. So I want to impart to you, please don't let the board decisions affect your evaluation of these. We're working on these three cases that we've had since I started in '23, bar none, you know, and there were, there were three basically now with the one last. That's kind of a different box. I think the other thing too is, again, I want to impart to you, do not view the discussion of the funding as an attack on this. I think the time to right-size, continue to right-size this a little bit, I think we're already moving this direction. And Josh, I really think has already moved us in this direction. So they're simply aligning where we're at in terms of number of projects and the level they're going to have to get to, to what the funding the state is going to provide. And frankly, I don't think the state has caught up. It became a way of, you know, the conservative, whatever you're going to call it, but I'm going to use these labels, the more conservative group that was pushing this, it became a way to poke them in the eye by saying no to that. But the board had already made this decision, and I think Josh and the governor had already moved towards this. And so please don't view that as an attack. We need to right-size the funding to the more balanced mission that you've decided to achieve. Thank you.
I'm going to, you know, I guess maybe deviate a little bit from the standard answer as far as what you would do with just what I call soft projects. And, you know, I look at the, you know, in the Highway Department, they've got 2% of every project is a soft project, I would say, you know. I like where Josh is going, as to actually saying, let's, what's the dollars and cents, and what are we going to get back on this? But I think there still is a little bit of room for what I would call a soft project. And I'd say that, you know, you do it in a manner that forces people to actually get some cost shares, or some different, or more skin in the game, or different areas. But I would say, you know, no more than two a year, and no more than $500,000 apiece. You know, I think something like that is reasonable, because you've got a lot of, you know, you've got, the problem we're going to have, and it's going to get more and more exasperated with the hatchet approach that they had in tax reform this year, is that you've got a lot of political subdivisions that are going to struggle just to provide services. And they're not going to have, I think, any money for much matches and different things in these situations. And what normally happens in the course, and I've seen this through my, you know, 30-some years in public service, is that you have these times where really only the rich get richer. And a lot of the smaller counties or the ones that don't have alternative revenue resources, they're really, really going to be strapped. And so I think it's really time to understand, you know, the lay of the land that we're in. And to understand in those situations, one of the things that we did with, in that time period, and this had to do with libraries, is that we did a different mechanism in the counties, where it was a 3-2-1. The counties that were in the top third of revenue, they would only get $1 a match for every dollar they put in. The middle counties, they got $2 match, and for the libraries, they got $3 match for every dollar match they put in. But you've got to figure out some way where, you know, Wyoming can move forward together as a state, and that you don't have necessarily winners and losers in this situation. I don't think we're going to have enough money to make everybody a winner every year. And unless we change our attitude on how we get money, and the situation I'm in is that, you know, I want to, if, and I know we can, we can, we could double the percentage of what we have in investment revenue. And at the same time, all that's, if you do that, you're really, all you're going to do is keep up with the loss. $600 million a year and growing on coal. No money at all when you look at being able to replace schools, because we lost our coalies bonuses clear back 10 years ago. And the only way that I see to actually work on that without, you know, impacting the person on the street. I agree on tax reform. There's definitely some places in there where things have gone up 150%, 200%. And I was talking to a guy from California that moved to Sheridan. He wanted to, you know, basically have tax reform, and he moved to California, he was part of the problem. You know, he drove the price of houses up and made everybody's house unaffordable. And you've got situations where people had $150,000 house, and now it's worth $3 million, and they're basically moving out because they can't afford to live in the house that they grew up in. There's a lot of problems, but we didn't really work on this. I'd say more in the scalpel, they just took a hatchet to it, and they say, the devil be damned, we don't care, we want our money. And, you know, it's a frustrating thing to see government work in a grotesquely, I say, way that essentially throws away common sense and goes to greed, what can the government do for me today? Total instant gratification syndrome, basically is what it is. And so we need to get back to where we're helping each other, understanding the impacts that this is going to be, and understanding that it's not business as usual and won't be for at least another two years. You know, and so those are situations that, that's a reality that we're in. And so when we can grasp that and then go back in, if we're going to refit the Business Council, they're going to have to realize that reality and understand that there are situations where you want to help, but the market disappeared because the people just aren't there anymore. It's a great idea, but not in this town. And then I told this to the folks in Pine Dale the last time, and here's a situation where we said no during the less COVID crisis and stuff. We said no to LUSK for a, basically an ambulance, met all the criteria, it was an emergency. They didn't have money for the match. Program was very, very specific. You don't get your, you don't get your ambulance. And so there's a situation where that ambulance wasn't serviceable, it could get halfway to a hospital and you'd have a bigger problem. They had one ambulance, if it went on a call, it probably wouldn't be back for three to four hours. And so they were totally without service. Yet Pine Dale comes in, we just gave them $10 million of money for their hospital, and they got close to $200 million in the bank, but they had the match and they qualified for their ambulance. So they got their ambulance. So those are situations, whether it's the Business Council, or whether it's the grant programs that we have, we're going to have to look at the new reality. And I told these folks, I says, you know, at some times, we're going to have the means test. And that means that the rich might get some grants, but some grants, if they're emergency type things, and you've got a couple hundred million dollars in the bank, I'm sorry, folks, I'm going to say no. But I don't have the authority within our rules to do that. So we need to look at those. You know, those are situations that we have some control over.
Auditor and then Superintendent.
In response to Ryan's question, I think it's a good one, and I think it's the reason we're all struggling. I don't know, you know, how do you say, how do we say no better, or more often? And I don't know if it's, you know, I don't want to have a binary test of if it doesn't create jobs, we're no, but maybe, I think, I think the consensus is we want to see more either revenue generation or job creation, or covering the revenue. And I, you know, an example, and I, you know, bar none was near and dear to my heart, but maybe it's, okay, well, here's this project that absolutely is a quality of life project, and maybe it doesn't, maybe it only creates two jobs, but here's our, here's going to be our fee structure, and here's exactly what, how close it's going to come to being in the black, and maybe more refined data about, you know, because I think some of the testimony was, well, we'll be able to rent it out for sports and concerts, and well, well, tell me about that. Because I, you know, some of that I believe, and I'm not picking on them, but I think just maybe we need to not so much see something specific, but something more concrete that gets it closer to breaking even on some of those quality of life issues, which again, and I think, I think we all know that these projects can be problematic, but I think that the Treasurer mentioned, you know, that they're hard not to support. You know, I remember when, I probably shouldn't say this publicly, but I remember when the Rec Center came up for a vote here 10 years ago? Anybody remember that? Yeah, I remember. A lot of people didn't support that, that's why, yeah, I'll say this out loud. I remember thinking, anybody who voted against that should be issued two small toddlers on a three-day weekend in January, and realized there is, which I was at the time. You know, I had these two small children, and there was nothing, you know, I remember driving out to the Wellcome Center and it's, it's, it's a desperate thing to try to entertain kids, and this is the biggest city in Wyoming. So anyway, I say that because I very much understand the quality of life components, especially for young families, but it's where, where's the, where's the government in that? It can't be 90%, it needs to be the final 10.
I would just add, you know, it's interesting, you said, we put you in a, the board puts us in a tough spot when you say yes, but I would also say, as we saw at the other meeting, even when you say no, we find ourselves in a tough spot, which is what we did. And so that's where I think it's really critical that we reconsider the Community Enhancements Fund even existing. I think setting up parameters, and of course, you want enough flexibility to find a right project, but really making sure that what's been done the last couple of years, we, you know, we codify, or we at least put that into rule as part of the process. So I think that's very helpful to us, because they checked the boxes, you know, but it should be more than checking the boxes, but we don't want to send them up for failure. So I think that that's step one. And then two, I think, you know, you've heard some of this, we're always going to say, you know, what's the estimated return, what is the job growth? I like these ideas of clusters, I think, these kind of industry clusters that we're having in the state, it kind of, we're trying something different than, than, you know, an inch deep and a mile wide, and kind of sprinkling all around. And so I'm really anxious to see, I'm supportive of that right now, we have to, you know, we have to see what's going to happen the next few years with those. But that's something that I think is attractive, how are they tying into some of those projects already in place? And then I think just long-term, you know, use of things like infrastructure, you know, can those, if something doesn't work out, what could that be used for? So anyway, just to add on to what's already been said.
So you nailed it, just about the perfect amount of time for me to jump on a soapbox for a little bit, and then to thank you all and to thank the audience. So let's talk a little bit about where we're going next. And I do think it's important for us to remember that we're on, we're on a journey that doesn't have a finish line. There is, there is no mark that says we're done, that we did it, that we never have to change anything again. This conversation that we had today, when we do it next year, and when, it's not if, it's when, when we do it next year at the same board meeting in Cheyenne, and I hope you all will join me, it's going to sound different, it's going to look different, because we're learning at every stage of the game. In 1998, the Wyoming Business Council was created. For five or six years, we did not have a thing called Business Ready Communities. We did not have a fund that we could use to put money into communities to build assets. We didn't have that. And so during that time, what we learned is that our communities were not ready for business. So as any good government agency does, there's a problem, let's throw a solution at it. That solution for communities that weren't ready for business is called Business Ready Communities. So we just take that three-letter acronym, we flip it around, and everything is great. But what we learned at that time, after we put, in about 15 years, we put over $400 million into the state, an inch deep and a mile wide, in 400 projects, we put that kind of money out into the economy. And after that amount of time, we analyzed our results, and what we found is that we had a negligible, if not zero, effect. Now, we could have continued to defend our position, we could have continued to say, no, it's still worth it, no, we've got to do it. But instead, what we said is, let's change the course, let's take a look at what we're doing, and let's reevaluate and try to do our best to change that. Now, that wasn't an internally-driven thing, it was a combination of an internally-driven thing. We got some pressure from the executive branch, we got some pressure from the legislative branch, that, thank goodness, the judicial branch wasn't around, or they would have pressured us too. But we felt all of that, and we said, let's take a look at ROI. Maybe all of these deals should pencil, maybe they should provide a return to the state. And that's where we are today. For the last five years, we've worked hard to generate a return for the state. And by and large, the projects that we've said yes to, now SLIB hasn't always agreed with our decision, but the projects that we've said yes to are a positive return for the state. And as any good businessperson... And as any good businessperson, you look at each deal, and you think, gosh, if we get every deal right, we should get the this should be right all along. We should fix the problem if every deal is right. But I think there's something missing. And I think right now, where we are, is that we're at another inflection point. We're at another point where we're going to ask people in our board, people on our team, people at SLIB, to look a little harder at what we're really trying to do. And what we're really trying to do is not provide a return for the state. I know that's going to sound a little crazy, so bear with me. What we're trying to do is we're trying to build the know how at a community level, and provide the policy, the investment, and the leadership at a local level, so that they can learn to solve their own problems, and do it without state help. Work ourselves out of a job. And the way that we're going to do that in this next phase, is by making it even more difficult to get money from the state. And even more important, that the community comes with their know how, and that we do provide the 10%, not the 90%. And I think that that's going to be a change that's probably not going to be in statute. It's probably not going to be in rule. It's probably going to be only in our vision, and our backbone, and our ability to say no, even though the rules say one thing, because we don't just check boxes. We have strong leaders in Wyoming. We are strong leaders. And we're going to have to continue to do that, even at the risk of upsetting some people. Because I think that in the long run, what we're going to see, is we're going to see much more resilient communities, that understand the tools that they already have, and many of them already have plenty of tools. But we've got to help them see how to use them. So that we can play the role, and the ever smaller role of vowels, in the creation of words. And if we can do that, and have more conversations like this, it is a complex beast. There is no black and white. This is all gray, and it's all going to be judgment calls, and it's going to be all the things that are really, really tough. But I think if we're willing to do that, and we're willing to make it even tougher, our communities will respond. In the last five years, five years ago, I just want to remind you, five years ago, in March of 2020, we had a board meeting where we said no to every one of those projects. That was the first time that it ever happened. And what happened after that time was not pleasant. Let me tell you, this is going to sound a little weird, but thank goodness for a big pandemic, because the Business Council was taking some serious heat after that board meeting. I heard from every economic developer in the state, I heard from everyone on my team, I had what you might call mutiny on the bounty. And it was because we moved some serious cheese that day. And I think we're going to have to do it again. Because here's what happened when we did that. Did people get upset for a week? Yep. Did people get really mad at me? Absolutely. That's what I'm there for. You know what happened? Our communities responded. The projects that we've seen in the last three years are a direct result of us raising the bar. I believe our communities can raise the bar. I believe our communities will respond. And I believe that we have to continually move that bar up, so that they can see that they can. And once they see that they can, we're going to move the bar again. And that's just the way it's going to be, because there is no finish line. Economic stability, economic sustainability, economic growth, doesn't come from keeping the bar low. It comes from continually raising it. And I appreciate that you have all been on this journey with me, and that my team has continued to support that, and that my board has continued to be that recommendation, that's not always easy, but it's the right thing to do. And it's going to continue. And I think that with a relationship with the legislature, to build those things into into statute, that's incredibly important. We want that backing, we want that continual growth. But there's going to be a lag, and there's going to be time when we're not going to have that. And so in those cases, we're going to have to toughen our resolve. We're going to have to be stronger. And we're going to have to do what it takes to make it so that our kids, and their kids, and their kids after them, will have a Wyoming that we can all be proud of. So I thank you all for being here today. Not only were you excellent at playing games, and answering really hard questions, but I just, I think it shows a lot for how much you all love the state, and where you all come from. And I just appreciate the partnership that we have with SLIB. So thank you all.